Okay, where you go?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting. May council meeting, it's May 16, 2018, 7:01 PM. I'd like to ask everybody to join me, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is the consent calendar, and there's been one item added to that. There's a number seven, Public Works Director's Report was added here this evening. Are there any questions? If not, a motion and a second to move it on.
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, aye. Sorry. We'll sidetrack this thing.
We're getting organized yet. Okay, motion passes. Next, item C is open forum. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one running to the podium, I will take that as there is not. So we will move on to item D, reports. First one is the city administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. The only item I have for you tonight is to set the 2019 budget meeting dates, and since that is coming up here this summer very quickly, I would suggest we set workshop dates for six o'clock before the regular council meeting for the months of July, August, and September as needed, so you don't have to come on a separate date if that would be convenient for everyone. Just wanted to get a feel, make sure that works for the council.
Input?
That works for me. I like that idea.
John?
Yeah.
Ross?
Yeah, I'm in.
That works.
Okay, perfect.
Let's do it.
Sounds great.
Any other, any general updates, Jenny? Anything else that you have?
I think the only thing I'd like to mention is to stop by The Pickle if you haven't recently. They've done a nice job of giving their off sale some much-needed work and doing some new things with their coolers and shelving. Looks really nice, and they're still going to work on it some more. But Terry, and Terry Willene and Brian Farrell put a lot of work into it, so looks really great, so stop by and check it out.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is the city attorney's report for information. Tom?
Thank you. Mayor Council wasn't here at last meeting, but talking to Jenny's sense, I understand that the sign at the Nisswa, part of the Spirit Store now is kind of coming to fruition as far as getting builds and designs and that stuff. So we populated your packet today with that easement agreement that we stopped talking about last fall, and that conversation kind of took a stop. And so the easement agreement is back kind of on now. We do need an easement agreement from Shaffer's thinking we're going to cite that sign. So the hope is they can approve the concept and form of that agreement, and then we would give it to folks at Shaffer's for good review and consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel?
Does this easement just basically cover the footprint where that sign sits?
Yeah, and there's no legal description for it, so it'll depend on the drawing, is reference there that you don't have as part of that, that'll be the reference point for obviously ingress and progress to that area.
And then just basically kind of meets and bounds legal?
We don't even have a legal area.
Okay.
People just rely on the fact of wherever the drawing is, and we all understand where it is.
Sure.
We have access back and forth to it to maintain.
Okay.
I think that'll be sufficient.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Question is how courier to Shaffer's, Ross? Do you want that to?
Yeah, I could do that. Absolutely.
Okay.
This isn't anything new for Mr. Shaffer. I mean, he's aware of something that shouldn't be a big surprise.
I don't know that we've approached this, but having said that, I can't believe it'll be anything.
I don't think it'll be anything major.
Yeah.
It really protects us and them.
We assume we're looking for a motion here?
Yes.
So I'll make the motion that we accept this easement agreement as the draft as presented by Tom here, and proceed forward.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Tom, do you want to just email me a copy?
I don't have anything else to report to you.
Okay, thank you very much. City engineer, Mark?
Good evening. Yes, at the last week's planning commission, Don Jacobson, they've been dealing with a property north of here, and the Tom Stephens is looking at. And Tom, he, Tom, or Don said he was, he had talked here about this potential easement here that was never recorded, and what he said last Tuesday was that he was going to refill. We're going to talk about it tonight. But look at his face, I guess, Pat, don't think Don has ever talked.
Did you get the message?
Did you say Don, did you say this?
No.
No. Don Jacobson.
Yeah, and I was surprised he said here, so because he was going to, you know, he just announced us, well, we'll hear from the attorney next Wednesday at the council.
Right. This conversation did start a couple months ago, and Don interviewed him, his problem that Tom Stephens did try to get ahold of me last week, and we did trade phone calls, so.
Okay.
Well, it's just kind of the conversation.
All right. So, well, this is odd, it's, because he, you know, kind of just asked me to make sure that it keeps going, that it gets forgotten, so, all right.
So is that development looking for an ingressygress off of, that would go across the Paul Bunyan Trail? Is that, is that the crux of it, or?
Well, you know, the entrance into the terrace over here, you know, the DNR didn't grant the city a 66 foot wide road easement across here that is recorded at Glen County. So that is in place. The development, the north was approached, proposing to come down and connect to, you know, the existing road, which was 28 feet wide, because it was always visioned as a possible street in here to serve that, so.
Aren't we talking about this tonight?
Well, that's.
Yes.
I mean, in number six of new business, isn't that dealing with this?
It's in another, correct, Ross, in another direction.
Okay.
Mr. Stephens is proposing it for two different directions.
Oh, okay.
Trying to see which way you might be able to get something to move forward.
Okay. So anything else that?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. New Business, number E1, resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed establishment of a tax increment financing district number 1-13 within the development district number one, and the proposed adoption of a tax increment financing plan relating thereto. Should I read the rest here? Proposed scheduled events? Well, just, I'll read it for the record. 1A is proposed schedule of events for the Sportland Corners redevelopment project. E B is memo dated, there's a memo dated May 16, 2018, from the city administrator, TIF application fee, and memo dated April 16, 2018, from Patrick Smith, proposed redevelopment of Sportland Corner located at 24066 Miley Road. Did you want to take it from, you want to take it and run with it, Jenny?
I sure can, thank you. So tonight we have before the council kind of an initial preliminary request for consideration of establishing a TIF district at that Sportland Corner location. Patrick Smith is here tonight from American National Bank, so I'll invite him up in just a second to introduce himself and to just give a little bit of a preview on the project that he's looking to do at that location. But kind of working backwards, the initial memo that he sent to the city a month ago is included in your packet. It's just a general overview to kind of initiate the discussions. The first step in is, I should step back, I reached out to our consultant, Tom Denaway from Springstead, to help step us through how this process might look if the council is in agreement to continue to move forward with this. And so that is what the resolution is here in front of you tonight to basically allow us to start that process. It takes about 60 days to go through from start, and they look at the construction and the values and what that will translate into future TIF dollars. And that's what is in front of you tonight, but maybe to back up a little bit, I'll invite PJ up just to introduce himself and to give you a little bit of the project. We don't have a lot of details as far as numbers yet. Either way, you can stand up here and, but we wanted to give you as much as we have, and just get a feel from the council if you're okay to move forward, and we just will take it each step of the way and see where we go. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Jenny. Well, thank you. And counsel, mayor, Jenny, thank you for getting us on the agenda so quickly. I'm not sure where to start. I think with regards to intros, you all know me somewhat, and I certainly know all of you to some degree, so I'll skip over that part, but essentially, good news. American National Bank is looking to build a bank building in Nisswa. So the question becomes, where do we do it? And how do we do it? And that, of course, will be driven by the location. My guess is, you're all familiar with Sportland Corner, you're all familiar that it's been sitting empty for quite some time. It is our A location. It's the location that we want to do our project, but us, like anybody who is in a fiduciary capacity, needs to make sure we're doing it prudently. So from a financial standpoint, without any criticism, the owner of the property is expecting a rather large sum of money for the purchase of that property. If you look at the tax records, if you talk with the owner, which I've done numerous times now, there's perceived value both in the location and in the structure. I've been through the structure, guessing that some of you may have been as well. The structure is very, it's in, from our perspective, it's a knockdown. It's not anything we can work with, and I think quite rapidly, it's deteriorating to the point where it's more than likely a knockdown for anybody who wants to go in there and do a project. So we've written a purchase agreement, we've agreed on price, we have accepted terms both ways, but those terms are completely contingent upon being able to put in place a tax increment financing redevelopment district approved by the city of Nisswa. So tonight, that's what I'm here to propose and to try and get some feedback on. We, one way or the other, we're coming down. The question is, tonight, is simply, where are we going to do it? Are we going to do it on Sportland Corner? Are we going to continue to look around and probably, if we do the Sportland Corner project, it'll be an expanded project. We're already talking, we actually are close to an agreement with an additional tenant, which would be Stonehouse Coffee, that would be, they would come down there as an expansion, not a relocation, and we would do a larger project that would involve additional rental space. If, if this, if the tax increment financing, the redevelopment is not something the council is in favor of, then we'll simply look for a standalone location and build a bank building. So with that said, I think I'll just open it up for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. A question that I have for you is, well, I guess there's probably two questions. The first one, you've touched on a little bit, one possible tenant, maybe, is there, is there potentially more than one tenant, or would it just be the bank and one? I'm not exactly sure how much, how big the bank needs to be, and all the square footage, parking issues, water retentions, things like that. So just clarify to the best that you can.
Yeah.
If there's going to be any more tenants, or what the possibilities are that you're considering.
Well, I'll start by saying it's a complete work in progress. From the bank's perspective, it's pretty clear cut. We need about 4,000 square feet. For us to just go in there and build that bank building at 4,000 square feet, it's a significant, given the dollars we're talking about for the property and the redevelopment, and given the location, it's, it does not seem appropriate. So we're kicking around a lot of different things. Right now, it looks like if Stonehouse were to join in, they would be looking at about 1,500 square feet. We'd be looking at 4,000 square feet. We're looking at, at this point in time, where we think we're headed on the Sportland location, is approximately a 5,000 square foot building on one level, on the main level, and an additional 4,000 square feet of space on a second level that would be serviced by elevator and of course, you know, all the other requirements, so.
And would that be part of the bank, or would that be?
A small part of it might be, and it would be there for, certainly for future bank expansion, but more than likely for other businesses looking to either expand in Nisswa or to move into Nisswa.
That's all I have for right now myself. I'll wait hold on the other question.
What do you have as projected closing date?
Well, we, our purchase agreement calls for a closing date of September 3. Our goal, I mean, if, if timing worked out perfectly, we would close on the 3rd and break ground on the project sometime around the 15th, or shortly, shortly after the close date, let's put it that way. Obvi, this is the very first step, though, because it doesn't really make a lot of sense to spend a bunch of money designing a building and doing all the planning that we need to do if ultimately, the tax increment financing redevelopment district is not something that the council's on board with. Okay. Ross?
My question, kind of more focused, is maybe you, Jenny, or Pat, maybe you can answer it, but tonight's steps really is just the beginning steps, and we'll get all the information. I mean, if we proceed to go ahead tonight, all's we're saying is, yeah, let's get this started and see where it ends up, and see what, all the numbers and how it all works, and have a little, I mean, I had a great education with you on Monday on this, and obviously need a little bit more education on it. So if I'm understanding right, we're not really locking into anything, we're just starting to forward the research and get, build information. Am I correct in that assessment?
That's absolutely correct. Part of this piece is also making sure as the numbers get more solidified, that, obviously, that PJ is still on board with that, depending on how things work out on his end as well as the city's. But I didn't want to engage Springstead too far, you know, too far into this until I received the council approval. I anticipate that our consultant would either come up here or provide, you know, a good deal of documentation as this moves forward over the next couple of months to keep you in the loop and, and, you know, discuss any hurdles that we might come upon if we do.
And we would also be setting this public hearing for July?
Yes.
As part of this?
Yes, yes. Just based on the noticing requirements that we have, and some of that lead time, we have to do that. But if for some reason it was canceled, it's canceled, and we don't, we're not out anything as far as that goes.
Okay. So what do we, or we, is there, Pat, do you have some idea what sort of, I don't know that the city's done many TIF projects for, like redevelopment or to help lower the overall cost of a lot. It's more been for, you know, city sewer projects, you know, things like that. Do you have a rough idea what you might be looking for, for, or asking in the TIF? Yeah, I tell, you know, I think we're kind of honing in on that. Let me step back. First of all, the, I've worked with the city of Nisswa on tax increment financing arrangements. I'm thinking of the senior center over here. That was what is classified as an economic development TIF agreement, which is different than what we're proposing here. Ours, a redevelopment district, and this is, this is important, is, I think, from your perspective anyway, is one of those things you have to look at and say, how bad do we want that area redevelopment, redeveloped? Currently, you have a situation where the building, it, you know, it's not pretty. It's a site where, I'm not the first person to take a run at it. I mean, there's, a lot of different people have tried. The problem is economically, to put a deal together with the current owner, given the condition of the building and the deteriorating condition of the building, it's, it's, the numbers just really don't work. So, and from the city's perspective, currently you have a situation where the property taxes each and every year are diminishing, the money that you're making off of that property. Under a redevelopment district, you would stop that immediately, and you can all look, I mean, you can look at the numbers, it's a pretty straight trend line down. And you, you wouldn't only stop it, but you'd be able to capture a portion of the additional increment through, you know, regulation and how it all works. So the city, in my opinion, needs to look at it and decide. I mean, do, do we want to sit tight and wait and see if somebody eventually comes along? Or do we want to partner up with somebody and figure it out? And so from my perspective, or from any investor's perspective, who is going to come in front of you and ask for this type of thing, it's, I mean, it's kind of the, I said to Jenny, it's kind of the chicken or the egg situation. How much money do we spend to find out if you're interested? So from my perspective, I'm interested tonight to at least get a feeling of, I mean, if we can put together a project that, that you're in favor of, do you support the idea of redeveloping that district and playing a role in doing that?
Has there been, I mean, are you thinking like a three-year TIF, five-year TIF? I mean, and what, I mean, I mean, to me, that's a big part of my thinking is, I mean, what exactly, I mean, I hate to go set a meeting for July and do all this, and I mean, I'd kind of like to have some idea what we're possibly looking at, or maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing it. But it seems like, once, once you say, okay, we're going to start down a path, then usually it gets difficult. People start to feel, oh, we can't change the path because somebody's going to get upset. So I'd like to have a candid conversation now, before I make my decisions on. So that's why I asked, Pat, you know, do you have a feel for what you're looking for?
Well, okay, so first of all, TIF is an interesting animal, so there's, there's eligible costs, okay? And those costs can be certified to a TIF note, and that note will, will be, you know, just like a bank loan essentially, where it identifies a principal balance and an interest rate. How it will be repaid is through future property taxes, and not, before you start looking at how it's repaid, you take out all of the current taxes that you're earning off of it, and an additional 10%, which goes to the city as well. So the starting point is the increment of future taxes that are paid because of the new project, okay? So that's how it's repaid. So you, but the crazy thing about TIF is you can have a note amount for a million dollars, and you may only earn 300,000 of that through the repayment, because the TIF district will expire before the note is fully repaid. So, and we're working on an application, we're identifying within that application, you know, the risks we're willing to take, but it's, it's kind of a mutual, we set a number, and then, then we see what happens with the future taxes, because I don't control that, you don't control that. The, the taxes will be set by the assessor. So, but going back, I mean, I think that's important information for you to ponder as you think about this. But essentially, if I were to boil it down to a number, I would look at it this way. I look at it that we're probably overpaying about $400,000 for the site. The purchase price is 775, and the building has an assessed value of 440,000. So in, in my opinion, that property, based on comparable sales, is probably worth 300,000 to 400,000 dollars. So that, that would be a number that we'd be looking for. The demolition, which is, you know, we don't have any firm bids on that yet, but that's probably 50 grand for a rough number, and then the cost to work with our council and your council to put it together. So that would be the amount that would be potentially certified to the TIF note. Now, how much of that do we actually collect? That depends on the term of the TIF note, the interest rate associated with the TIF note, the increment of the taxes, the property taxes which are created.
And, and the challenge is, is of course, having some of these details to have that understanding. I'll offer that the, the maximum term for redevelopment district is 25 years, 25 years. We haven't talked at all about really specifics for that term, but that would be the maximum, and whether we land there or somewhere in the middle is part of the piece to all of these different pieces, as far as what would come back in taxable value and the interest rate and all those things, so.
The, the public hearing that you mentioned here on the 18th, that's also a regular council night, correct?
Yes.
So would there be, would be, there be a request to take some sort of action at that point?
Correct.
Okay. So we would have, we'd have it narrowed down by that?
Oh, yes.
That would be the point of the whole, of the public hearing?
Yes, yes. I expect we would really have more details in the next month, for sure, to maybe bring back to the council for an update. We can work through some of that outside of a formal public hearing piece.
You know, kind of cutting to the quick, I would say, because I think, I mean, I think, I'm sensing that maybe it's real important to get a, even though I don't think we're to the point where we can really qualify or quantify the numbers, we probably will not do this project if we can't get a TIF note in the area of 500,000 dollars. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, but again, you know, you go back to where is that money being created from, okay? It's being created from the increment on the additional value of the property. So it's taking nothing away from what currently exists. And so from, you know, I guess the point I want to make here is, I think, I think the question is, do you want to redevelop that property? Do you want to see it redeveloped? Because I can tell you, after dealing with the, with the seller, it's going to sit there for quite a while longer if the city is not, the city or somebody who's got a lot of money who doesn't care about rate of returns and things that most of us have to deal with, is willing to come in there and develop it, so.
Yeah. You know, outside of, you know, I mean, just taking Sportland and you, Pat, out of the discussion, and as I think about it, you know, as a small business person, you know, I go, there's a part of me that says, yeah, you know, certainly we'd like to see that corner redeveloped, you know, and, you know, I do have certainly, you know, as a councilman as mayor, I have some interest in that. There's another part of me that, you know, kind of goes, well, if I was going to go look to buy a chunk of land on the highway, and, you know, they wanted X number of dollars for it, but I didn't want to pay that much, should I go see if I can get TIF money so I don't have to pay as much for it? And, you know, there's that, because it can kind of come down to, if you do it for one person and you help, you know, I mean, wherever it is in Nisswa, the next person that comes in and asks for TIF to help save money on the purchase of a piece of property, I kind of go, jeez, I don't know if that's fair, you know? So that's, that's what I have to wrestle with. I mean, I'll just, you know, just, just to share what's in my head with you, that's, that's what I would, what I have to wrestle with.
No, I get it, I get it. I mean, I've been involved in a lot of transactions that have involved TIF financing, and it, you know, when you- you know, when you, so the very, the very fundamental question with TIF is but for. So, and that's really a question that you all need to think about and answer. And the but for question is, but for the TIF, would the development happen? And I think in this case, it's pretty clear. I mean, it's been there 10 years, and, you know, quite frank, I'll tell you candidly, we won't go for, we will go forward with the bank in Niswau, but we will not do it on this site unless the TIF is involved. And so, and so I think, I mean, that's where, where it gets a little tricky with the TIF is the idea that it's a subsidy. It's not a subsidy. It comes off of the increment of the additional taxes. So, it's one of those things that should only be used when but for the TIF, you want to go forward with the development of a assisted living facility. Or but for the TIF, you want to go forward and redevelop Sportland Corner. So, you know, that, that's really the issue. And I, you know, that's your decision, I mean, and I completely respect that. What I'm hoping for is to be able to move forward one way or the other with some clarity about, are you in support of that?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it is a difficult scenario for somebody who would like to purchase that piece of property. I mean, it might be fair to say that, you know, that's a, the person who owns it is, has high expectations or possibly a little unreasonable. But I get into the, but I get into the, well, is it, is that the city's position to, to deal with? And so, and that's, so those are my thoughts. I'll just open it up to whoever else, and then we'll move forward.
Well, I, I certainly see that this could be an opportunity to take care of an eyesore. And if it, if it means going this TIF route, I mean, obviously, she is not a motivated seller. And as Patrick says, it's going to take somebody that just doesn't care to come in there and buy it. Otherwise, it will continue to deteriorate, and it will continue to be an eyesore at the entrance to our city. So, I for one do think we, it could, it could kill a couple of birds with one stone. And TIF money, to me, seems like, it seems like it would be a very good and wise use for TIF financing, in my opinion. I don't see any problem with setting a hearing and further examining it and getting more numbers and going from there.
I guess I, A, don't have, I mean, the numbers are crucial without, you know, but I definitely think it's an appropriate use of TIF money. If, you know, and I don't think every one of these projects stand on its own, and I don't know if we can fairly say, well, if we do it for this, we do it for everybody. That's not, because that's not been fair on the other side of that for you who's asking for this. If we make the decision, we make the decision, these are the reasons, at least for me, myself, these are the reasons why I'm making it, and I'll look anybody in the eye and tell them, this is why I did that. And I don't believe by going forward tonight that we're locked into this either. If these numbers come back and, you know, stuff, again, as long as, you know, PJ can look you in the face and say, this is why I've changed, you know, why I've decided where I did. And I understand the money, I don't want you guys to waste your money any more than you want to waste your money, so I'm taking it serious, and I'm, but it's so hard to, TIF is hard to understand to begin with. And without actually having the numbers and seeing how it works and seeing how, you know, it's, it's just impossible to make a decision. So, I'm absolutely in favor of going down this road and seeing, and hopeful, and I'm hopeful that we can come to terms on something that's reasonable and, and we can put something there. So, that's my opinion on it.
I have to echo what Ross said. I mean, get, get the ball rolling, but get the numbers. It's got to be a good deal for us, or we won't know that until we get the ball rolling.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, that we move forward with the resolution, calling a public hearing on a proposal, establishment of TIF increment financing, District Number 1-13 within the Development District Number 1, and the proposed adoption of a TIF increment financing plan relating thereto, as presented.
I'll second.
Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Look forward to hearing more.
Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to being part of the Niswau community.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Pat.
The one other follow-up piece I have to that is the memo that I have in your packet regarding the application fee. We don't have a standard TIF application fee, so I did a poll of various cities, and I liked this approach, which would be, the city's application fee would be $1,000, and then we would require American National Bank to deposit $5,000 into an escrow account to use to offset our consulting costs at this time. And they would pay the balance due at the end, or we'd refund them if we don't spend the money, but.
Should I, do you want that in a new motion?
Please, if you authorize those fees, that would be great.
I'll make a motion that we set up the fees for this, for the initiation of this, the approval to set the TIF application fee to a non-refundable $1,000, plus an escrow deposit of $5,000 to be used for any out-of-pocket expense incurred by the city, as proposed in this memo dated May 16, 2018.
Second.
Pat still here?
Nope, he left.
Oh, I'm assuming he's in agreement with this?
He is, yes. He has a employee event thing to attend tonight, but yes, I did discuss it with him, and he was fine.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Wonderful.
And then, Item C, did you have anything, does that?
That's just the initial memo that he presented for your information.
And we have that, so thank you. Okay. Next on the, under New Business is Item E2, Presentation from the City of Niswau Fire Chief Regarding Purchase of a Pumper Truck for the Fire Department. Sean?
Good evening. Thanks for taking time over your evening with me. I'd like to present our new fire truck, potential new fire truck, to you guys. I've reached out to everybody of the council. You guys have called with some questions. If you had questions, you called. If you didn't, you didn't call. Where we're at, we're looking at a fire truck. If you, in your packet, you have a picture of the truck. The truck is going to cost $466,133. How we're going to pay for it, I've laid that out on this, how we're going to pay for this pumper. What I'm proposing for is $510,233. Our down payment would be $263,133 to custom fire, fire trucks there. Our loan amount will be $203,000. And then the equipment for the truck from the sinking fund, our truck fund that we have set up, will be $36,867. And then from our fundraising account will be $7232. That's how we come to that $510 amount. We've done a payback option here, fund, if you can look at that, we're in the seven year, we want to do the seven-year deal. Our payments will total $235,651, and at the end of 10 years, we're around $314,000 in that account. How that works is our truck fund has, we put $55,000 a year into our truck fund at this point. When I took over as chief, that was only $45,000. Two years prior to that, when I was assistant chief, it was $35,000. So, we've sort of made a standing deal. Every couple of years, we revisit this truck fund, because when we bought our last truck 15 years ago, it was $275. Now, we're finding for the exact same truck, we're $466. So, things are changing. So, we're trying to speed up our truck fund to match the times. So, I'm hoping in 10 years, I have this $85,000 a year number in my head, and I think I can get there in 10 years with our contracted areas. So, that's, that's my repayment plan. Right now, we have $307,000 in our sinking fund. I'm going to use 300 of that towards this, this venture, and the rest will be paid from us. I guess I'll just open it up if you guys have any questions before we go any further.
Well, just for clarification, for the records and the, and the audience, Sean, you had mentioned $466,000 for the truck, and then you mentioned $510 for the total. The difference in there is just for the public and for, and for the record, that is for
Equipment.
Equipment to go on the truck.
Yes.
So, that's where the truck's $466. The equipment that's needed for the truck?
Is $44,100.
Yeah, there you go. And then, so the total then becomes $510,000.
Yep.
And then of that $510, about $300,000?
We're going to borrow $203,000.
Yeah. $300,000 is in, is in, in an account right now for that truck.
Yes.
And then you'll borrow the?
The rest. The two, we're only going to borrow $203, the rest we have.
So.
And then we're going to do that through a leasing program with the, at the end of our lease, at seven years, we'll have a $1 buyout.
Yeah, I read through that.
So, the $203 that you're financing, so the repayment on that loan, is that built into your, into your payback options here and also building up the sinking fund again?
Yes. Hang on, I've got.
Well, Jenny was shaking her head yes too, so.
Okay, here, I'll just hand it to you.
And it's on this page, it says, Community Leasing Partners. The seven-year option shows the payment, which is 40, oh, $33,000 and some change, so the difference would go into the fund to keep building that up over the next 10 years while we're making the payments on the truck.
So, Mr. Johnson, that paper, I see how it does the 55, plus minus the payment is what I would have left.
Yeah.
And in 10 years, that was, yeah.
You see that?
I'm pretty versed in it already, so.
Sean, I just thought of something. The $44,000, does that include air packs?
No, we have plenty of air packs.
You got plenty of air packs to?
To, to make this work.
Okay.
And the, the idea of this is, I don't know, I'll explain how our system works. Right now, we have a 44-year-old truck that supplies water to our hydrant system in the city of Niswau. So, when you get a fire downtown, we take a truck over to the Niswau Lake, we plug into a suction pipe, per se, and we hook into a hydrant, and we push water with that truck uptown. Our truck is 44 years old. You can't get parts for it anymore. It's got a blown head gasket, and when you start pumping water with it, in about 45 minutes, it overheats. It's a problem. So, my answer to it is, we take our 24-year-old truck that currently sits in Lake Edwards Township and move it into that 44-year-old truck hole. Take our 15-year-old truck, move it to Lake Edwards, and then put a new truck in its place. So, we're really getting rid of one pumper out of town, that old 44-year-old truck. So, that's, that's my thinking on this whole fire truck deal. I have explored used options, just to see what was out there. We found a 2015. It's not the truck we specced. To get it close to what we need to do, it came in at $399,000. We had a $23,000 light bar, plus $6,000, roughly between $5,000 and $6,000 to install it. So, you know, our numbers, it just doesn't come around. We did find a demo truck that's fairly close to what we wanted. When we get said and done, it looks like you're going to be about $455. So, you know, to get what we want, we're only talking another $11,000. So, I mean, to me, it just makes business sense to go forward with what we've specced, what we'd like. It's a truck just like we have today, so training will be minimum. I mean, there's always training on all trucks, we train all the time. So, if you really figure in the $11,000 with a different truck, you know, at least 10 nights of training, which costs me about $330 a night of training, you know, you add another $3,300 on it, which we train all the time anyway, but, you know, you see, it just chisels that $11,000 away, so it just gets back to where it makes sense. And that's where I'm at. And I'm just looking to you guys, do we go forward? Don't we go forward? I would wish that we could go forward and, and move on.
Sean, I know it's kind of, I asked late, but did you get a chance to check and see how financing changes?
Yes, I did. I couldn't get anything in writing. If I go used, instead of going 3.87, I think that says, we go anywhere from 5.95 to 6.5%. They would only give me a verbal over the phone on a 10-year note. So, it jumps up quite a bit. And then we're losing warranty. I just, it does, I don't think it makes business sense to buy a used truck.
Yeah, it'd be one thing if it was a 40% price difference or something like that, but...
But it's just, it's not there.
But that is very close, yeah. And I did, I did have a conversation with Sean about it, and he kind of went through all this, so I'm pretty familiar with it and comfortable.
The other thing you kind of have to realize is, so by the time we're done now with 18 that's moving over to replace the Persh, which is the 44-year-old truck, by the time we're done with that, that's going to be a 40-year-old truck. And, you know, and we know what we got, we take good care of it, but the other thing that fire departments do is they try to stay with the same vendor. We've, we've gotten one truck from Custom, we've been very happy with it, our service from them. Our previous truck we bought, that company went out of business, 3D went out of business.
Like, a year after we got it. It was quick.
So, we had to have panels custom made, we had to, so, but you'll see, fire departments, pretty, pretty common for them to stay with one company. Everyone's familiar with it. And like I said, we've, we've gotten absolutely really great service out of, the families actually, the family that owns Custom actually has been building fire trucks for three, I think, well, they've?
Forty years. This is their 40th year.
They started out with General, which Brainerd used General, we used General for years. And so, it's just, just factor that in there too, that it's, 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 it's a good company, and it takes care of us.
Any more questions? Entertained a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with purchasing a new fire truck from, I'll take a?
Custom General.
Custom Fire, as the fire department has presented here tonight, with the numbers that they presented here tonight, going with the seven-year payment option, as, as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very so much. The fire department appreciates it.
Good job.
So, in nine months, nine months, we'll come present it to you.
Good presentation.
Yes, very nice.
Yeah.
All your paperwork too is good. Keep his feet on the ground, it's going to, you know, it takes eight, nine months, so.
Next on, under New Business, Item E3, 2018-19 Liquor License Renewals. We have a sheet that lists all of the applicants and, or current, current holders, and is there any, are there any new?
Correct.
But everybody's got their paperwork in and?
Yes.
And ready to go, so to speak, so.
So, on a, I'm sorry, you, were you going to?
I was just going to say, paperwork and fees have been taken care of.
Do we, do we run new background checks or anything on a renewal, or is that only on a new?
Yep, it's only on a new, unless there's a violation or something that occurs mid-year, then we address that at that time as well.
And we haven't had any issues with any of these?
Nope.
Okay. I would, well, I guess I shouldn't just jump right into it. Anybody else have questions?
No, I've, I've read through it, yeah.
Okay. I would move to approve the 2018-19 Liquor License Renewals as presented in our packet.
Second. Second by Ryan. Any further, any discussion on the motion?
Since Don isn't here, I'll ask. They have all the insurance requirements and everything that have to go up.
Yes.
You have cop.
Yes.
Make them feel good.
Time to be proud. All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E4, Set Election Judge Pay Rate for 2018. We had information in our packet. It's recommended that we go from $9.50 an hour to $10.50 an hour. And we do not, we are not in need of a second judge. Is that what it is? Or what role would you take there, Jenny, that would?
Great question, yes. So, I will be the head judge for the election. So, I will manage all the correspondence with the county and getting the results back and forth for the primary and general elections. But we do have to have somewhere around six judges here to help with all of the different processing that happens for the election. And so, to, as it is difficult to find judges, and we'd like to make it, you know, as worth their while as we can, I'd like to just do an increase. It's been a couple elections since we've done that, to the best I could tell from the files, and this still maintains within our budget, but would give them a little extra for helping, helping out the city.
Okay. I'll make a motion for, right?
Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 election judge pay rate at $10.50 an hour as presented.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Flip the page to Page 2. E5, Recommendation to Accept a Quote from Revice LLC for Website Hosting Design and Maintenance.
Can I give you a little background, or just some information?
I guess, I don't know, how did, is, maybe we should just open it up for questions, because, I mean, all the, all the information was there, so.
That was pretty straightforward.
Yeah. You know, the one question I had, and I mean, obviously, I think it was taken into account, but Revice is... You know, the one question I had, and I mean, obviously, I think it was taken into account, but Revice is, and in this day and age, distance isn't necessarily a big thing, but I believe they're from Michigan.
Yes.
And there's two local firms. And so I just.
Thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, we gave due consideration to that and so on.
We did, absolutely. Trying to look at all of the different criteria and how you compare. Everyone's a little bit different. We felt that the individuals, a couple staff members and a couple council members that reached out, who felt that it was important to have those systems in place from a, from a larger, slightly larger company. We've had some challenges in the past with smaller operations. And although I think that the proposals we received from the two local vendors were very good, and I certainly don't know that we, don't think we'd have any, you know, issues. This was, this was the consensus from, from the group that I kind of got feedback from. I think they do a great job, but certainly willing to discuss if, if the council wants me to look at it any differently.
Did we, did we do a kind of a background check, referrals from, from client, from existing past clients with this company? Because, I mean, obviously, the reason we're looking for a website, a firm to work with on our website is we've not had the best of luck with the, with our most recent.
Sure, sure.
So, I mean, I think, my, just a question that I would have is, in a consideration, is just that we would do a, talk to, you know, a handful of. People who've been, maybe been with them a few years that have been, that know the experience, or that have an experience with them that could help make sure that we're making a good selection. That's only, those are my only thoughts about it.
Sure.
Counsel?
Could we make a motion contingent upon that?
Can make a motion however we would like.
Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve the bid from Revice LLC for web hosting. Price is quoted within the packet. Contingent upon maybe some due diligence on some, some current customers, just to make sure the experience has been okay.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion?
The only thing I have, I don't know, it may sound silly, but Jenny, you, you feel comfortable that we've expressed to them our needs and our wants and what we're looking for and where we want to go? I mean, obviously, this has been a bit of an issue, but do you feel comfortable that we will at least express to them what we're, our end product, what we want and?
I do, and I, I think that they have an understanding based on some of the other Minnesota work they've done. Just as far as translation between our city and other similar cities. I think that they'll, they'll help work through all those details very, very well.
And my only other question is, because I kind of like the thirty-seven hundred a year payment deal. If we're not happy with them, we can, we can.
We can.
Close separate ways.
I think so, yeah. I can confirm that though.
Yeah, I know it's contracts and all of this stuff.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So then, kind of along the same line of where I was, Jenny, did, have you or whoever's been involved with this search, have you, have you gone to some of the websites that Re, that Revice has done and looked through them and gone, wow, you know, or this is what, really what we're looking for?
Yes, I, I went through a few of them that they listed from other Minnesota cities, and they're, they're very sharp looking. They're very easy to use, creative. They'll, they'll work with us to, to make sure that we've got the most important things addressed for, for us and for our needs. But I'll certainly make sure to reach out to some of those cities and get their feedback and make sure that I don't see any red flags before I officially move forward with that.
Sure. Yeah, and if you could, when you reach out to those cities, if you could try to find their quote-unquote web person, so you could have some direct talk with them, maybe not just say a city administrator if they're not involved with it or something like that, but really.
Sure.
Because, yeah, we would, I know everyone here would really like to see the city have a nice website, functional website, easy-to-use website, and obviously, it's been a, right now, we've had a few years' struggle to make any progress there, so.
Yep, absolutely.
And I think you're well aware of that, so, you know, I think we're all just, we all just want to make sure that we're, that we're in.
Get it right. Get it done.
That citizens will be happy with, yeah.
Sure.
I think the only problem I have, or the only question I have, is the, the systems that they use. Jenny, talk to me a little bit about that. It's not a stand. Do you want to explain that? Because you understood it better than I did, but it's not the same WordPress.
They don't use, they don't use a WordPress system. They actually have their own. And I was planning on demoing that as well, to make sure that the ease and the functionality is, not that anyone would really have that much familiarity with WordPress right off the bat. So it's a learning curve regardless of what we use. But checking with those other cities as well to say, how intuitive is it and easy to use? So that you can kind of pick it up and, and run with it to make those easy changes and that kind of thing, so. That, that is the difference between Revice and some of the others, but they've obviously created something that seems to work well. So I'll definitely, I'll definitely check that out before we, before we finalize. Make sure that that feels, feels right for us.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
E six, approval to enter into discussions with the DNR for potential road easement. And Desmond, you going to bring us up to speed on that? Thank you.
I will do my best. It's a kind of a convoluted history, but yes, we are here to ask for permission or a request of authorization to proceed forward with discussing procuring a roadway easement with DNR. The subject request stems from a current application or a pre-application we have, if you will, for a project that is located south of Popular Avenue and north of Hills Crossing. It's thirteen acres, and the proposed, the potential developer is Mr. Thomas Stephens. And essentially, what he is looking to do is part, part of this application and future development application, should he decide to move forward, is he will have to provide a street connection to Hills Crossing in some manner along, you know, on the south side of the property, because it's far too large to serve with just one roadway to the north to Popular Avenue. So with that, you know, back in two thousand, I think it was probably seven, two thousand and eight, there was a conditional use permit for the Hills Crossing development to the south of it. And as, and in that, there was a condition of approval that stated that the applicant should provide a roadway easement to allow for access essentially from that property to the north. For whatever reason, a roadway easement was never, you know, secured and recorded. And later on, there was a subsequent conditional use permit for the property in two thousand and eleven, I believe it was. And with that, pardon me, with that, there wasn't any reference to the previous approval or the roadway that hadn't yet been secured. So basically, what we are asking for is to essentially enter into agreements, because at this time, we don't actually have an application at hand where we could charge an applicant. I guess what our thinking is that if council agrees to allow us to move forward and talk with the DNR about securing an access to, to Hills Crossing through another portion of that Paul Bunyan Trail, that the applicant or the developer put money in escrow so that we could pull application fees and attorney fees. We'd probably have to have the easements drawn up and looked at by engineering. So now, of course, I think from a design perspective, it would be much more desirable to have it come straight south into the Hills Crossing development. Although, rather than the easement that is being suggested, because it comes in at a forty-five degree angle. But that said, Mr. Stephens is trying to look at various options and trying to secure his access to the south, should he move forward with this project, so. I guess that's.
Okay, okay.
Trying, trying to bring you up to speed, but if, I'm sure you have additional questions, feel free to play the fire away.
Well, you know, a question that I, that comes to, or a thought that comes to my mind is, and maybe I'll premise it by saying, I'm, I'm not at all opposed to this development potential. How, roughly, how many homes or might possibly go in there, Desmond? Is there, there was kind of a drawing, wasn't there?
Yes, there was. The last, the last sketch plan review, Mr. Stephens was proposing thirty-eight units overall through a planned unit development.
So, so my one concern with the development, I'm generally in favor of it, but my one concern would be thirty-eight new traffic or new vehicles entering out. And probably, most of them would come out by Hills Crossing and going, so every, every morning, there would be a good number of vehicles coming out, going through downtown Minnes, or Minnesota, Niswau, and, and potentially adding to traffic issues. So I think that that would be something that should really be taken a strong look at and to help mitigate that and figure out what maybe the, you know, if there's a better option or what the options are. Because that, it's a significant number. And, but I think that, you know, I think that can be worked out, mitigated, and taken care of. But that would be my one comment about it is, just so we look at additional traffic load in downtown Niswau. Counsel?
So at this point, you just need approval to enter into discussions with the DNR?
Correct. If Mr. Stephens looks to proceed in this manner, then we would. DNR has informed him that the city would need to be the applicant in this situation and not, not a private developer. So we would just begin that discussion with them about what, what all is involved with securing that easement and expanding that exist, the existing easement that's there.
So if he, if Mr. Stephens ends up not developing it, his plan falls through, are we still going to be reimbursed by him? Or was he, is that going to just be our dime? How are we?
I, I think the, the notion is that we, that we would have Mr. Stephens put money into an escrow account that, that he would be paying the, all the attorney fees, engineering fees, and also application fees. So, so if he decided not to proceed forward, you know, I guess we would just, you know, he'd be able to, you know, take his, withdraw his money from the escrow account at that point?
Receive whatever's left over. It sounds like the DNR fee is two thousand dollars.
That's great.
Right off the bat, so we're probably in the five thousand dollar range for an escrow.
That was my question, is how much you're going to escrow.
Yeah.
You might want to give some consideration to that and just add up some preliminary numbers and come up with a number of, it's five thousand, seven thousand, two thousand, ten thousand, whatever it is, and.
So is he, does he actually own the property now? It's his, or I thought?
That is not my understa, yeah, he has it under contract at this time. And I did believe he was going to come to present his case tonight, but I didn't, don't see him in the audience today.
Desmond, is it the right time now to establish the escrow? Amold?
I believe so. I think we have a fairly good idea of what the cost would be associated with it.
I think that would make sense, if, if you agree, Tom, that if, if the council wants to approve moving forward with the DNR, we'd also say to include that, that escrow payment before we would proceed.
Yes, if no, no conversation with DNR contingent on that money being deposited through an escrow, subject to an escrow agreement, right, but so rely on you, Desmond, for what that number should, is it five?
Well, the, the application is two thousand. Then we have engineering fees, and of course, we'd probably need your input with regard to any legal fees that would be associated with review of an easement and looking at that, that document and that language.
Can you write into these agreements though? I mean, if we say it's five and we spend five, then we ask for more? I mean, I'm assuming we can kind of keep tabs on where we're at, and if we're getting close to that five, then we say, hey, another three. Can, can, I mean, can that be kind of written into there, that, you know, it's contingent upon how much you're spending? So you don't over, you can't overspend what you have in escrow?
Yeah, Ross, it's a good idea, but it's tough once you get going to that point where it needs to be replenished. So if that's, if we're concerned about that, it's much easier to take more as a deposit and then be able to refund it than just to stop midstream and talk about replenishment.
Okay, that answers that question. So would we be, you know, would, would it be fair and prudent to say seventy-five hundred? Or do you think, because we start talking engineering fees and lawyer fees. I'm, I'm in a two thousand dollar, I don't even have three thousand.
I believe the engineering fees, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Howland, it would be the review of any kind of legal description that was provided for, for the easement. We wouldn't be looking at engineering drawings that, you know, preliminarily with this, would we?
No, I guess it's, is Tom prepared the actual, you know, he worked in the stone library now, does he have that? That's the cost is to do a easement description and plan. You know, that, that, whoever does it, Stone Mariner, anybody, that's a lot, fifteen hundred dollars. So if you think, you provide that, and if we just review it, you know, we will review it for less than five hundred dollars.
Right.
And that, does that, so that gets billed through the city? That doesn't get billed directly to, to Mr. Stephens, I guess?
Normally, yes. That, that fee would be billed to the city directly from, from.
So maybe we should consider seventy-five hundred then?
I was just going to say, I was just going to say, it seems like five would cover it, but maybe not.
Well, we're at thirty-five hundred.
The first two items.
The first two items, potentially.
But then, didn't, wasn't Mark just saying he would be up to.
If he provided that.
Provide the legal?
If he provided it, then it would.
For five hundred bucks?
Let's just do six, it'll give us an extra thousand.
Six thousand?
Whoever makes the motion can pick the number.
I'll make a motion that we proceed forward with approval to enter into discussions with development of natural resources for potential easement as presented. And I would make that contingent upon a six thousand dollar, six thousand dollars put into escrow prior to any work moving forward. Any discussions?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Do, do we want to add in there that he provides legal description?
Well, I think we're, because it's fifteen hundred if he doesn't, so I think we're covered.
Okay.
I think we're covered either way.
Okay.
Then Tom, would you be putting a document together for this then?
Sure would.
So part of our motion would be, then that this information that's in the motion would be taken by the city attorney and drafted into a document and an agreement? Does that sound good to everybody?
To be paid for out of the escrow.
To be, yep, to be paid for out of escrow, or that's my understanding of what I heard anyway. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E seven, next on the agenda, recommendation from the Public Works Committee regarding purchase of a sewer truck. Who's going to take that?
I will. The, the truck you're looking at here, the Ford truck you're looking at, this is not a state bid truck, okay? The reason for that is Ford and Ram are the only two that are bidding this size truck, and they're done for the year. The state bid has to wait to get a rebid. It could be a month from now. It could be a few months from now. There's a, there's a substantial time drag by the time you put in the order for this truck to the time that you get it, because they got to, they may have to build the truck or get it here, and then it has to be outfitted with the equipment and everything. A couple things that staff has done on this truck. In the last truck, they tried, they went with a built-in air compressor. It, it's been giving them headaches the whole time, so they decided not to do that. They have a better option in mind, they can handle that. They're also reusing a, they eliminated the diesel engine again, and then they also. that. They're also reusing a, they eliminated the diesel engine again, and then they also, they're reusing the power inverter inside. It was, they mounted it inside, it's in good shape, they can reuse it, saves an additional four grand. There was a question that was broached about rebuilding the existing crane and using it. The crane has given them, and Mike, stop me if I'm wrong, the crane has been a problem, and the, the manufacturer that builds the crane, it's not just us, it's multiple communities that have been having problems, and they've gone to a better system that they've been very happy with, and so pretty much most of the utilities of the crane this size and the arm have gone to this brand that, that they're quoting here. So, the truck is still, it, it's still under budget, but it's also, as far as state bid goes, by buying it from Mills Motors in the past, they have always, well, I shouldn't say always, but they have generally met or beaten state bid anyway. So, the thought was, why wait for, who knows, when the new state bid list will come out, when we're pretty certain that they're going to beat the price anyway?
How did this price compare to the state bid for 2018?
It was under.
This was?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, this was under. So, and the trade, we've been kicking around the idea of trading them or selling them straight out. Sometimes you can make a little better money if you sell them straight out. This one, from what Mike has told us, I mean, it's so close, I mean, the trade in they're giving on this is really good. And if you, you might, I, I mean, for what you might make additional would probably be eaten up in staff time, because as you can see where the price of the truck is, that, you know, they might as well, you know, a lot of places can find, so, and this is based on going to dealers that actually deal in the used truck of this type, and this is the price that, this is about what that truck would fetch anyway. So, we're looking at trading it in. It's quicker, faster, easier, and we don't have a lot of the mess and the hassle of trying to do closed bids and sealed bids and waiting and hoping the check clears and everything else. So, so the, the board, it's, it's a good truck, it's a good, it's, it's going to meet the, 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 the needs of the department, and this is a ten-year purchase. So, I, you know, I would make a motion that we accept the, the bid as presented for the sewer truck and get it purchased. Right now, if we, if we move today, we're probably looking at a November, November-ish delivery date.
Did you make a motion?
Yes. So, I'm going to make the motion that we accept the bid for Mills Motors to purchase the sewer truck as presented by staff.
I'll second. I do have a question, though. Since there is no state bid, can we, do we have to have other bids?
No, it's under the threshold.
Because I talked a lot that you could do it if you, if there is a state bid.
It's under the threshold, so the dollar amount is fine.
Oh, okay. All right. I just popped in my head, and he said there is no state bid, and I just.
Good question.
There's not a current one.
No, I get, I get what you're saying. I just wanted to make sure we were.
In fact, if you look at the state bid website, and you look at the state bid and who's got them, and you look at what the dates are on the bid, according to what the website says, it should still be available for that price, but they're not. And that was from MinDOT, said that, there was a couple of places we talked. Well, Mike's, Mike's Motors, who had, has the Ford bid, said they can't even bid them out anymore. So, and then MinDOT, the, ah, the, the Motor Pool folks from MinDOT, same thing. So, I'm going to guess that maybe they're lying this way.
Sorry. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E eight, recommendation for Public Works Committee, from Public Works Committee regarding the purchase of a supervisor truck.
Okay, on this one here, this is replacing the current truck that Tom is driving, the red Ford. That, we're, we're looking at replacing it. We have two bids. The one is state bid. We actually have three bids. We have a state bid for the Ram pickup, we have a state bid for the Ford, and then we have a bid for Mills Motors. Mills Motors, once again, did beat that, beat the state bid as well. The Ram is, is $4,000 less. The, the committee looked at the $4,000 number, and it was decided, if we keep our money local, and we also, instead of having one Ram or Dodge, and everything else is Ford, we're consistent with an all-Ford fleet. We have a great dealership down here that we can work with and others in the area, and that was a decision that we ultimately decided to make. There are a couple of items on the quote, we just, that's why we decided to go with the Mills quote. There are a couple of items on the quote that, and the, every dealership was given the exact same items to bid it out, so it was an apples-to-apples comparison. Couple of things that we're going to look at yet, or we wanted to get a question, I've had questions asked me on, is the box side steps, tailgate step, do, I mean, do we need those since we're going to have a topper on this? We wanted to go with a topper this time, staff did, wanted to go with a topper, to protect things that are inside the, the box, to protect tools and that, and also have a slide-out that would allow the operator to pull the slide-out to get the tools and pick them up here, as opposed to crawling in and reaching and bending and et cetera. Our insurance carrier, Jenny had contacted our insurance carrier, League of Minnesota Cities, their take is anything you can do that can help prevent injuries. It's cheaper and do it that way, as opposed to, you know, the work comp issues and things of that, and she can, Jenny can explain that more. The one thing that we are looking at in here is why do we, do we need the spray and liner? Do we need the box side steps and the tailgate steps since we're going to have a topper on it and we're going to reach in? These are things that can be taken off if the council so decides, and when it's ordered, but everything was ordered, every bid was bid out with the same specs. So, that's what we were, and that's the one we were looking at there. This truck, when I talked to Crow Wing County about trucks of this nature, they were coming, their trucks were coming in at around third, about twenty-eight to thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, depending on if it needed a certain amenity for whoever it was that used it for them. So, this truck is going to be coming in at, this, there's, you'll see the topper, it's a built-in storage, tool storage in the top, or the cargo slide. It's a crew cab, and it is a, do, 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 where was it I was looking at here? It's the crew cab, and it has the, you'll see a chrome package on there. Basically, it's chrome tires, or chrome wheels, if you will. It's not a, there's not chrome all around on the vehicle and everything else, it's just a, a chrome wheel for, for rust prevention and stuff. Helps with the rust and, and et cetera. The question was, again, if the topper, we wanted to give it a shot, the slide-out, we wanted to give it a shot. The question was, why do we have, why do we need a, a spray liner if we have the topper and the slide-out? So, what we were thinking there. And as far as the, the steps, I'll be honest with you, I didn't, didn't think about that, but we bid it out that way. But, Tom, correct me if I'm mistaken, but if we need something dropped off of here, it can be dropped off when the order is placed, right?
The spray and bed liner, at least on the Ram, is standard.
Right.
So, really can't drop it out, I guess.
On the Ram, on the Ford?
On the Ford, you could. I wouldn't recommend it. The Ford's an aluminum body. That's one of the reasons we went with the Ford, was we were hoping that would avoid some of the corrosion problems we've had with the current truck. But the aluminum is also softer, dents easier. We're hoping that the spray and bed liner will give that a little bit more stamina for things that are dropped in it or put in it.
Okay, and I didn't think of this at the time when we were discussing it at our Public Works meeting either. If we have that slide-out in there, that's eight, that's the whole length of the box, right?
Yes.
And a slide-out. So, do we need the spray and liner if we have that?
Well, it, it goes up the sides as well.
Okay.
So, I don't know, need is necessarily the right word, but it, I think, you know, this is, for me personally, this is at least three or four trucks I've had spray and bed liner, and I feel it's well worth it. The, the box doesn't get beat up, it's, you know, it just makes it structurally a lot more sound than without it. It's not a big expense. Tom, your topper's going to have doors that open up, and you're, that's going to have built-in toolboxes. Right. What I was hoping to do there is, right now, if you've seen my truck, you know, I've got the toolbox along the back, and you got to stand up on the tire to get anything out of it. Well, this brings it out on the side, so it's more at arm level, so you can see, one, you can see what's in it, and two, you can grab it without having to climb on anything. And I guess, you know, because I was, like, the box side steps, I think with a topper will be kind of worthless, unless, I mean, because you're reaching in eye level unless you're putting stuff up on top of the topper. Yeah. And then same with the step, you're going to be walking up and into the topper. And I would normally a hundred percent agree with you on a spray and bed liner, but in this case, with the, with the rollout liner, or with the rollout box, and then with your toolboxes kind of above the sides, I, I'm just not wondering if we can take a thousand dollars off here with stuff that, unless you can tell me that, you know, the, the steps, the box side steps and the tailgate step would be of a benefit and potentially save us from, you know, for safety or whatever, but that's kind of my take on them two items. Well, I think the tailgate step, you should probably leave on there, because even with the slide-out, there's a potential you will go in with the truck for whatever reason. But I can agree with you on the box side step. We expect that before we put the topper on it, so. Right, okay. I guess it probably was an oversight to not remove it. But with the topper and the step on the back, I mean, you know, the step's nice if you can step up and, and, you know, walk into the truck, but you're actually kind of, obviously, if you're going to go in the truck, number one, you have the slide-out. Right. Which is really going to eliminate that. And, and you really can't walk into the truck with the topper on it. Am I making sense here? So, I, I guess I'm, I'm still questioning whether, especially with the slide-out, because you're, you know, that's the whole reason the slide-out is to pull everything out to you. Sure. And I, I kind of know how them slide, them, them tailgates work, and I just wonder down the road, you know, if you get them a little tweaked up, they are hard going in and going out. I just, I guess I'm kind of seeing that, that baby's not necessarily needed.
The, what's not, what's?
The tailgate step, because it slides in, it retracts into the tailgate, and I'm assuming if you get that, I'm sure it's like a boat ladder, if you get a little bit tweaked, it, it just becomes. I don't know. The, the whole reason that was on there is Joe Ingebrin with the League of Minnesota Cities, our insurance carrier, wanted it on there when we began specing this. And if you didn't have a topper on either of these, and the slide-out, if you didn't have the topper and the slide-out on either of them, I would a hundred percent agree with you on both of them options. I'm fine with it. I don't have it now, so.
I mean, I would, I'd, I'd agree with you, Ross. I, I think there's, yeah, I mean, I think you, I think you made good points there.
Again, I'm a big for spray and bed liner. I just don't think with the side bot, with the, with the tools on the side and the, built into the, which would be really nice, and I agree, be useful, you're not really going to be, that'll be covering the sides. No, that's above. You know, I'm talking from the sides, the box. No, I know, but they're going to come into the truck. Yeah, above the box. So, they'll be kind of, I mean, they're going to kind of be protecting the sides, because you're, you're not going to be, you know what I'm saying, with that?
I mean, I don't know, I don't know what you haul in the truck that could do that much damage to the sides. I mean, I think you're hauling cement blocks and.
But that'll be in the slide-out.
Like tons of those, so.
Well, you throw a shovel in the back, you know?
Yeah, but that's, that's not going to ding up the side of a box. I mean, I phoned enough pickups to, so I could certainly agree with Ross on that.
You know, I'm fine with that. If that's what you want to take off with, that's fine. But. Like I said, I, I would be, if, if you didn't have a topper on there and you didn't have the slide-out, and that, I would absolutely a hundred percent agree.
Yeah.
But I, I just think that in ten years, I bet you that box is going to be still in pretty good shape.
So.
Ten years, you come to prove me wrong.
So, box side step, tailgate, and the spray and liner, those things?
We can take those out when we order it, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, if we take those out when we order it, eleven ninety-five. That brings, after trade-in, because we're looking at the, what was the last number they gave us for trade-in?
Seventy-two, I believe.
That's what I thought it was, too. And we were looking at trying to sell this one straight out. When you, when you take the red truck, even with the condition it's in, it's, we could probably sell it, take sealed bids, set a limit of, you know, a minimal bid of what the trade-in is, and anything we make in excess of that is just more that comes off the cost of the truck. But at seventy-two hundred, with eliminating those other items, that truck value, that truck cost to the city is now twenty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. So, it's significantly less even than what the county's picking it up for. And well, we're adding a topper and that to it, that's why it's that. So, but anyway.
I'm not, I don't, are you, are you absolutely certain that the county's taking into account the trade-in? Because they may very well not at that price, but that's neither here nor there.
Twenty-eight thousand to three, thirty thousand dollars is what the county's bought the truck for on state bid, but they were adding things to it that they didn't and whatnot. But it's still, that's, that was from the gentleman at Crow Wing County Engineers' Office that does the truck ordering, and I.
That would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to proceed forward with the supervisor's truck from Mills Ford, using the quote that is presented from Mills Ford, with deleting the box side steps for three twenty-five, the tailgate step for three seventy-five, and the spray and bed liner for four ninety-five.
Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Then I would ask, do we need to, do we need to pass or as, or make a motion and all that to give you guys the go-ahead to, when the other truck is received, that we can bid out or put the other one up for bid?
So, we can declare it excess equipment and?
Yeah.
Sell it? That would be great if you could make a motion to do that.
Okay. I'd make a motion that upon the reception of the new vehicle, that the existing supervisor truck be labeled as excess equipment, and that we give the city administrator the go-ahead to put it up for sealed bids, not with a minimum bid of what the trade-in value is.
I'll second, I'll second to that.
On the discussion point, Tom, could you ask Mills that if for some reason we do not get, because the truck is not going to be going anywhere, it's not going to deteriorate or anything, if we don't get a bid that is at least the minimum, that we can still trade it in?
I could find out, sure. Can't that be after the deal, though? After we take delivery of the truck?
Yeah, but they still might do it because we're looking at it.
I mean, it's true.
Pretty hard to imagine that we can't get $7,200 for a four-wheel drive.
I know. I'm just trying to cover all the bases.
We could sure ask them, but I think a lot of times, once that paperwork's done.
And if it didn't go through, then you could've traded it in?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Do we have to, I assume we have to order this. What's our timeframe?
I haven't gotten one.
Okay.
Last, I did hear something, though, to the fact that one of Ford suppliers...
They're started up making them again.
Have they?
Yeah.
Okay. There may be a delay for that, but I don't know. It might be one that they have on a lot somewhere, too, when I actually come to order it, so.
Cool. Okay. Thank you. Moving along. E-10, or E-9, recommendation from the Public Works Committee to request updated quotes for the installation of the guardrail on Edna Lake Road.
Correct.
My understanding from the Public Works, well, from the Edna Lake group, that there is a, they're still strongly, felt strongly about the guardrail, and Public Works is recommending that we send out for bids again to find out what it'll cost, now that the ground is thawed out. So, there's a motion on that. I would entertain it.
I'll make the motion that we, that we approve requesting updated quotes for the guardrail. Hopefully, we can get the summer prices versus the winter prices.
Second.
Okay, second by Johnson. Discussion on the motion?
I believe, just for clarification, I don't know that I need to, but I believe that it was said that, and maybe Mark Hallen, you might have said, there's not gonna be like the tapered ends on it, it'll be the rounded, I mean, some sort of, I mean, just...
Correct.
I don't even know if we need to go there, but that's, it's gonna have a...
We're gonna figure this would be good in last December, the ends are, you know, the curved nut. So, it doesn't appear true, but given the speed limit, we're not, we're not putting any crash gear.
Okay.
So we should be hitting this at 65, 70 miles an hour.
I guess, yeah, does the motion state that we've been to exact specs we've built it before?
Yeah.
Or do we need it? Okay.
Well, it is.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. E-10.
Ah, yes.
Recommendation from Public Works Committee to accept the proposal for transportation planning services for CSAH 77, Nakomas Avenue area in Nisswa, Minnesota, from SPAC Consulting. Do you want to give a...
This, this one, SPAC, there were two outfits that, this is for the traffic study. There are two outfits that put in, SPAC is actually the most desirable of them, and they're the lowest bid. Grandview will be paying for this, and they will be working with getting the money into the city, or the escrow with the city, or no, just into the city, correct?
Escrow payment?
Okay.
So they'll reimburse us per this agreement when that bill comes.
And this is the traffic study for 77 and Nakomas and the Pines Cross, Edna, or Lower Roy Lake Road, the Service Drive Road, Nakomas and Forest, Forest and/or West Linden and Woodward, and East Linden, that whole area inside and on the highway. So, I would make a motion that we accept the proposal from SPAC Consulting for the County State Aid Highway, 77 Nakomas Avenue in Nisswa.
Second.
I feel deja vu. Haven't we done this? Have you already approved this at a previous meeting?
Don't think so.
No, we approved to move forward with the...
Oh, but we didn't, this is...
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yep. My only, my only surprise to this was, I really thought the study would be a bigger study. I mean, they're talking 96 hours, is what I had heard, and I'm like, wow, I didn't think that would really be very comprehensive, but if that's what is... That's what... Normal, I guess. Yeah, SPAC does it for, Mark was explaining, they do this, they do it all over. This is their thing. This is what they do. And it's kinda like the Rasmussen poll. You can poll a certain number of people and get a pretty accurate number of, you know, how people are gonna vote. So, and they're, they're not looking at, I mean, they're looking at over-the-weekend type stuff. They're not looking at just, you know, they're looking at busy weekends, and they're looking at peak, at peak times, and they're looking at not just like a Friday, Saturday, but they're looking at like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, over a whole weekend. So... But evidently, that's how they do it.
I guess it is, yes. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. E-11, recommendation from Public Works Committee to accept repair quote from DeChantelle Excavating for the repairs at Nisswa Avenue. John or Jenny?
This is, this is the sewer where we had the backup, because the valve, it was initially being looked at, trying to make, do we reroute things and stuff. It turned out that there is a manhole that's available. We have easement in that. It was covered over by a person's driveway. And if you have questions, if Mike wants to answer exactly what it was, but the bottom line is the, they'll dig that out, they'll open that up, they'll put an actual manhole cover on it. And then, now that it's there, we can inspect it and replace the valve that failed, and then make sure that it, what it'll do is it'll give, should an alarm go off, should there be a problem, it gives staff a chance to go down there, pop it, turn it off, and stop the backflow from happening in the first place. So it gives them, it gives them an additional tool to quickly stop something. Even if a valve fails, they can now get there and shut it off, right? Basically.
Yeah.
So, so it's more of a repair now?
Yeah, this is a repair. There's actually a check valve there, and there's a gate valve. Check valve failed, and the gate valve was not visible, because it's under the driveway, like you said, John. This'll put both of those inside of a manhole so they can be accessed in the future if they should fail again to be repaired.
When you say there's a manhole there...
No, there is not.
There will be.
Yeah.
I thought you said a manhole.
I did. I did say that.
Okay, that, just throw me for a second.
I just wanted to clarify, that's why we're excavating, to want to...
To make a manhole.
To make, to put the manhole in and to replace the failed valve.
There would be a manhole there, except it was under a driveway. Normally, you would've had something different.
There would've been a curb stop that come up to the top, yeah.
There you go. Thank you. That's what it was. Too many terms. Oh, okay, so that... Okay. Okay.
So the other ones, we can dig up relatively easy, replace out, and...
Okay.
Jenny, quit. Do we have a motion?
No, we don't. So I make a motion that we accept the quote from DeChantelle for the repair to Nisswa Avenue.
I'll second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item E-12, recommendation from Public Works Committee to accept quote from Commercial Asphalt Repair for spray patching on Hazelwood Avenue.
I'll just turn this right over to Tom.
What the quote shows is, I believe it's $3,200, and that's for one day of spray patching. I've contacted two companies recommended by the county to do that work. Only one gave us a quote, and that's the quote you have in front of you. Prior to that, we had some patches that we were considering from Anderson Brothers a year ago, but given we're gonna resurface Hazelwood possibly next year, we didn't want to spend a lot of money on Hazelwood, keeping it together, but we do have to do something, because it's in such condition that we'll be blowing the pavement off the, off the road with the plow next winter, possibly, if we don't put some tack on it. And so what this is, is a spray oil that's pushed over the top of it, and then they spread a little rock over and roll it in, and it gives just a little bit of a skin to kinda help hold things together on a temporary basis.
Basically, it kinda holds the puzzle pieces in place.
Is this kind of a no-brainer?
I, yes. The other way we were looking at doing this would've been in tens of thousands of dollars.
I'll make the motion that we accept the spray patching quote from Commercial Asphalt Repair for Hazelwood at the cost of $3,290 per day, not to exceed two days' work.
Second.
Gary Beatley.
Okay. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. E-13, recommendation from Public Works Committee to accept the resignation of Bob Bureau as a member of the Public Works Committee and to advertise for new members.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that with regret.
I'll add regret to that, actually.
Although we are calling down south, and wherever they end up at, and we're gonna let the local representatives know that if they need somebody to hound Min Dot, he's their man.
Are you moving, Bob? Are you moving?
I guess you are moving, then.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Before you finished, or? I would just like to thank you for the work that you have done for this city. I don't think people realize the time that you've spent in behalf of the city, and I sure appreciate it, and appreciate it, dealing with it.
Well, it's for sure, when you get on the, when you get on the trail to get something done, you do see it through, so, thank you. I think we'll thank you for that, definitely. Good luck with your new, with your new location. You moving closer to family or something? Is it with the... Just moving? Yeah. Well, thank you. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks again, Bob. Next item, E-14, authorize advertisement for sealed bids for 2018 street reconstruction projects. Fairly straightforward. Anything, anything that...
Nothing, nothing new from the public hearing last week. The next step to authorize for the bids for these four road projects.
Make a motion that we authorize advertisement for sealed bids for the 2018 street reconstruction project as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. E-15, this is the additional piece to new business this evening. Authorize the city administrator and the city attorney to draft an agreement between Nisswa and E-Toc Inc. for sewer connection fees and metering at Grandview Lodge. And if I'm not mistaken, this is primarily in regards to the hotel, or is it for all the things they're doing?
This is for the hotel and the rec center, that they are looking to secure financing and begin construction at this time. And so what, what Mark Roni has expressed to me that they need is, the city needs to issue, he'd request the land use permits for these buildings. Before, we would typically issue the land use permits, we would agree upon the sewer connection fees. And this is a very large project, and so we've talked about it internally as far as the connection fees and how we come about that number, and it's an estimation. But Mark and Tom have gone through that standard calculation and formula that you would look at for these types of things. And so I discussed with Mark, basically, we'd use this initial estimation of the 32 ERCs, 30 for the hotel, which is one for every two rooms in the hotel, and then two for the recreation center. Now, we came up with a payment plan, if you will, for some funds to come over the next few months, and then the balance would come once the hotel goes online, and we have a year's worth of activity. We can see what those actual hookup fees should be, because at this point, they could be overpaying, they could be underpaying, and we just want to get it right. And so we would establish, a year after the hotel is in operation, we'd go back and take a look at all those things, come up with the final number. And because of the length of time that this would take place over, I thought it would be most appropriate to work out some kind of agreement that we would have Tom help us with drafting, so that everyone's on the same page. Should anyone leave or change, you know, in the meantime, we have that documentation. The other piece to that, that Tom Blommer, Mark Roni and I have had discussions about, is adding meters to their existing buildings to more accurately establish that baseline. For something like the spa addition, to know where the current spa is at as far as usage, it just helps us for when that comes online as well in the future. Mark has agreed to do that this year, so we can capture some of that data for 2018 still, so we would include that in the agreement. I know it's a, kind of a last-minute thing, but I wanted to put this together, get your feedback. If you're comfortable with moving forward, Mark has given his okay, that he agrees to these terms, if you will. We'd get that from Tom, and I'll make sure Tom can kind of jump in with some, any thoughts or concerns. But assuming approval from the council or anything addressed, then I would be more comfortable moving forward with the land use permits and getting those issued, or having Desmond issue them, so that he can get his financing in place here very soon. So that's where I'm at. Happy to answer questions.
So the 32 ERCs at $8,000, would Grandview pay a portion of that $8,000 per the 32 now, and then it would be adjusted, maybe the amount, would they, would they pay the $8,000? Would we say, well, pay $6,000 now, we'll see in a year?
So they would actually pay, what Mark proposed is they would pay $25,000 now, roughly in the next week, we'll say. Another 25 in 30 days, and another 25 in 120 days. So we'd get $75,000 this year, with the balance of $181,000 to be paid, or whatever that number actually ends up being after the hotel's been online. So we would get almost eight ERCs worth of payment now.
Well, I mean, I think that, from my perspective, I think that kinda makes sense, because, I mean, the hotel's not gonna open until next year, so...
Right.
I mean, if they pay $75,000 this year, you know, they're kinda paying well in advance.
Seems reasonable.
At least, it's a good down payment, so to speak, so...
Yes.
No, go ahead.
By the motion tonight, are we agreeing the numbers, or are we agreeing to draft it up, and then come back for approval?
I would request that we'd agree to the numbers, if, yep, if you're comfortable with it. Oh, to draft an agreement, yeah, just for Tom to create the agreement. Yes, yes.
So, or do we not exceed the $181,000 then, in the future, even if the, if the, if the metering shows that actually it should've been 42 ERCs?
Yes, they will pay what the actual amount is.
All right.
Plus or minus, so. Tom, any thoughts, concerns?
I think that's fine. I mean, obviously, if we do this, we're gonna do it quickly, and we're gonna sign up on it. If you approve it that way, you're not gonna get to see the agreement, because it's gonna be, we're not gonna lose our next council, right?
Right.
But no, this is, do it, it's not a risk, it's gonna be a, a what it is after we know what it is, kinda thing, with a down payment.
Well, it's fair. I mean, 100%. I'll make a motion that we authorize the city administration, the city administrator and the city attorney to draft an agreement between the city of Nisswa and E-Toc Inc. for sewer construction fees and metering at Grandview Lodge, as presented.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I know Mark would appreciate that as well.
Thanks, Jenny.
Yep.
Old business. We have no old business this evening. Council reports. Old business, we have no old business this evening, council reports. I really don't have anything tonight. Council members, anything? Gary? Ross, John? Okay, just to make note of H, it's our announcements and upcoming meeting dates, and I would seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? People that we maybe don't have to do it? Thank you, everyone, good meeting.